We're going to call our meeting to order for the Stillwater Planning Commission Tuesday, May 6, 2014. The first item on the agenda this evening for land use items for discussion, possible action, Dan Spear subdivision exception for a minor subdivision, PZ .14, .18, 19, requesting a waiver for certain subdivision requirements to subdivide property addressed as 6015 and 6017 North Knoblock, not within city of Stillwater corporate limits, from one parcel into three tracts of land to be served by the public water services. Mr. Coots?
All right. I have a strange one for you. As you heard, this one isn't in the city. Yet we're here. Okay. Where it's located, I've got it in the hashed in the pink-purple, this property. The applicant would like to subdivide the property into three tracts, all of them two and a half acres or greater. And there is rural water district lines around this area. They would like to access the rural water lines. And that becomes important. And I'll explain a little bit more. This property is surrounded on the north and west sides by unincorporated Payne County. On the east side is zoned RSS, and that's the Canyons Development. The south is RTM, and that's the ranch, to be the Ranch Development. They've submitted a minor subdivision. This is the survey. As you can see, the, let me go back a little bit here. Property is accessed by Knoblock. It's a little road right here. And so to have these tracts, they'd like to basically do an extension of Knoblock coming out and around to provide the access to the properties. So like I said, it's three properties, two and a half acres or greater. But the reason, part of the reason why we're here is because they would like to, instead of doing a paved road, do a gravel road and do it to the Payne County standards for a road. Payne County does allow for gravel roads. This is a picture of what Knoblock looks like currently there at Burris. As you can see, it's not an approved road per se. Okay? So here's staff findings, and I think if we get through this, you'll understand why we're here. The planning commission may approve a subdivision exception, that's what we have here, if it's especially for lots that are two and a half acres or greater, if they can find that an unnecessary hardship or inequality exists. And to do this, it requires a four-fifths vote in the affirmative to approve this. This property is located in unincorporated Payne County. It's not in the city of Stillwater. It is currently accessed by a private street, that Knoblock thing that I pointed to, and they'd like to do an extension of that private street. They propose access to the Rural Water District 1 for water services. The Rural Water District 1 agreement, Rural Water District 1 is owned by the city of Stillwater. In part of the agreement when the city bought it, it requires that certain development requirements be adhered to when somebody is accessing that water supply. That includes you have to meet the subdivision requirements, improvement requirements, the mobile home park regulations, stormwater requirements. Problem in this case is that one of the requirements in the subdivision requirements requires that all lots have frontage on a public or private street. Another part of the code says that any private street must be built to city standards, which means paved. And that was the other finding here. And as I said, they are proposing not to build it to city standards, but to county standards. The minor subdivision is required as part of the subdivision requirements that they had to meet, and they have submitted that. And all other requirements appear to medics. So the question hinges on whether or not we can approve a subdivision exception to allow for a lot that does not front on a city-standard private street. Our alternatives, being accept the staff findings, being accept staff findings and find that an unnecessary hardship and/or inequality exists, and approve the subdivision exception as requested. As I said, it will require a four-fifths vote, which, since there are seven people on the planning commission, that would be six out of seven, and since there are only six here tonight, that would be six out of six. We can find that certain criteria, that the, find that the request is not appropriate based on the criteria for establishing an unnecessary hardship or inequality, and thus not approve the request, or we can table, or we can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date. With that, do we have any questions for me?
Anything for Tom?
All right.
I've been thinking about one.
Is this not something that would go to the Board of Justice?
Well, as I said, the planning commission has the power for any time there are tracts that are two and a half acres or greater to approve a subdivision exception from subdivision requirements.
In our motion, would we need to state the hardship?
That would be ideal, yes. Or inequality. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. At this time, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing portion. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposal, please step forward and state your name.
I'm Jimmy Hill, engineer for the applicant. I'll make just a brief little background here, and Mr. Spear will give you most of the logic and reasons behind what he wants to do. We are caught on this 17, almost 18 acres, a little bit of a whirlwind code-wise. Section 41 does provide that property outside the city limits may be developed with standards less than those required in that county road standards can be used. I have a copy of the county road standard. I want to assure you that this is a far better road than the road on Knoblock now that accesses this property. These are very good standards. It provides for stabilization, subgrade, compacted subgrades, six inches gravel, dimensions, grade, so forth. It will be a good road. It'll be a much better road, if allowed, than the existing road coming in. So the code actually allows that as is, but, as Tom's already pointed out to you, the agreement with the Rural Water District Number 1, when that was given to the city, had one provision that within three miles, city code would apply to any subdivision even outside city limits. So you might say that's the reason we're here. The follow-up code that we're really looking at, I think, here tonight is in section 23-64, which does give the planning commission the authority to relax the standard that the Rural Water District Agreement has sent us to. And that waiver does require six votes. So we're delighted to see six of you here tonight. Otherwise, we would be a little bit out of soap. With that, I think that it'll be better for Mr. Spear to give you his presentation on what he plans to do. Thank you.
So, okay, so I'm a rookie at these kind of things, so I would ask you to give me the signal to hurry up.
Fifteen seconds, that's all we know.
Fifteen seconds. So, hi. So, I'm Dan Spear. I live in Chateau Lake Estates, my wife and three daughters. We live right next to this property. And we bought the 15 acres thinking, you know, someday we'll downsize when our kids leave, and we'll kind of move out there onto the acres. And so we've owned it for a while. So if you'll look at the third page in the packet that I gave to you, what I'd like to do is use it primarily to zoom in on what Tom has showed you up here, and to kind of give you some more specifics about the actual project. So first of all, thanks to Tom and everybody in the city that have been very helpful, helping me kind of understand. I keep telling them I'm not a developer. We just want to do some little houses. And they said, no, you're a developer. So the long and the short of it is, we're just outside the city limits. My understanding is, there's a code that says we can use a county road because we're outside the city limits. But the city owns the water district, so there's another code that says we must meet, you know, we must build a road to city spec instead of county spec. And if we have to build to city spec, the finances don't work. This whole project is off. Okay? So I don't know if you'd call that hardship, but we've been working on it for about a year under the assumption that we could do a rock road. So if you look on the graphic, the aerial photo, you see down in the right-hand quarter, A, that says houses to be demolished. So the ranch is building the retirement center right there on the edge of the golf course on what is now known as peaceable acres. And there are four homes there that will, that are planned for demolition, so they can put up the retirement village. That particular piece of property is adjacent to our piece of property. And the red line that you see on the aerial there is actually the city limits, which are the dividing line between the ranch and our 18 acres. So the yellow boxes down below are roughly where the four houses are located today. And we are proposing to acquire and move those houses across the city limits to our 18 acres, and to put them on two and a half to three acre plots, and just completely repurpose them. So that is, that's the whole project. That's the whole business plan and proposition. So then if you look at C, the proposed rock roads, this is the rock road that would be about 1,000 feet long, as we propose it, and it actually connects to the south end of Knoblock Roads. So Dennis, do you need a copy? Okay. So does that make sense? See the L, the white L there looking thing? That's the proposed road, which would extend Knoblock to get us to the four houses. May have turned out to be three, that's a different thing, but it's either three or four houses. We hope to do four. So then if you look at the white elliptical things on the sheet, at the very top of the page is the road that is Knoblock, coming off of Burris, down to our acreage. And this really is not a county road, it's not a city road, it is a private road that connects down to our property. So it does not meet city or county spec. If you look at Chateau Lake Estates, you know, to the left-hand side of your page, there's a couple more ellipticals. The roads in Chateau Lake Estates are blacktop, they're well-maintained, they're well taken care of, but they do not meet city spec. And city has told us that even if they annex this property, they will not take over maintenance and care of the roads. Then if you look down in, down at peaceable acres, there's more of the ellipticals of the existing roads there that do not meet county or city spec. So our little piece of property is surrounded by rock roads that don't meet city spec, you know, all outside of, outside of the city limits. And if we build a really extravagant road, the only way that meets city spec, we would have to put much more homes back here to take that cost and divide it across the different homes. So our project of doing three or four homes just doesn't work. We also would have this private road, Knoblock. On page two of the packet I gave you, I provided you a couple of photos that were taken today, which kind of reinforces Tom's photo that says, you know, this is a, this is not a very good road. And to cross this road to get to a city spec paved road doesn't make sense. So we believe there's a lot of inequality if we have to build a, you know, road to city spec that does, will never connect to a road that is city spec. And the hardship is that our project just doesn't work, so we just won't do this. So the four homes in 2012 had a combined real estate tax bill of about, a little over $10,000. And I've provided the detail, the addresses, and the 2012 property tax for each property in your information package. So if these houses go to the landfill, that's $10,000 a year in property taxes that will not be paid. If we repurpose them, you know, that's $10,000 that will be paid to the county for however long, 20 or 30 years. So our request is allow us to use the county spec rock road instead of the city spec paved road. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Tom, could you bring up your alternatives one more time, please?
Yeah, I just realized, I did that prematurely before. Once again, we can accept staff findings and find that the unnecessary hardship and/or inequality exists, and thus approve the request. Once again, we need a unanimous vote to actually approve it, or we can find that the criteria is not established to meet the unnecessary hardship or inequality, and thus not approve the request, or we can continue or table to a certain date. All right. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, and then we can go from there. I move to accept findings and find that unnecessary inequality exists because an improved road tying to a gravel road would provide the inequality, and that we approve the subdivision exemption as requested.
Second. We have a first and a second. Please place your votes. That does pass this evening, six yes, one abstain. Second item on our agenda this evening is 213 West Elm LLC, map amendment PZ .14, .1826, requesting review and approval to rezone properties addressed as 220, 224, 226, 304, 308, 312 West Elm, and 140 South Husband. Street from RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate, and RTM Residential Two-Family and Multifamily District to High Rise. Mr. Coots?
All right. This is also a little odd. We have two different locations, not connected by each other, one right at the corner of Maple and Husband, and one on Elm. The common thread between them is the property in the middle. It's a multifamily development that's under construction right now, and the developer seeks to purchase additional property for additional phases of development. These, I'll start with the Elm property. It is surrounded on the north by the High Rise District and the RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate, the east by the RMI, the south by the High Rise and RMI, and the west by the RMI District. The Husband Street parcel down here, surrounded on the north by the High Rise, the east and south by the RTM Residential Two-Family and Multifamily District, and the west, the RMI. And both properties, we could say that the neighborhood is characterized by a general mix of single-family, duplex, multifamily, and high-rise type developments. And there's also a church right here at the corner of Elm and Duck. A mix of all kinds of things in the area. Findings include the project, or the property on Elm Street, we'll talk about them separately again, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan recommends higher density, or specifically high density and high-rise uses. The property on Husband Street, however, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, which, and by the way, the comprehensive plan echoes the corridor redevelopment plan. At that time, the corridor redevelopment plan outlines, right there at the corner of Husband and Maple, is being appropriate for lower-density residential, which would be like single-family, duplex-type thing. Of course, at that time, that was before the developer had acquired the additional property to bring it to where this Husband Street property is now adjacent, again, bring me back to the map, it's now adjacent to high-rise zoning. Both properties are actually adjacent to high-rise zoning. This zoning is approved, it would allow for additional future phases of development of the multifamily development, which is under construction there at Husband and Elm. And just so you know, the High Rise District allows for a density of up to 150 units per acre and a maximum height of 100 feet. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Tom. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Anyone that would like to speak in favor, please step forward.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing, I guess, the developers, and then all the property owners associated with this. As you can see, there's several pieces of property that we're looking at tonight. I understand that the south one, located along Husband, doesn't correspond with the comprehensive plan, but with the way that that block has developed, it really just blends in with the rest of the high-rise in that area. Husband is the pedestrian corridor, so we would still abide, you know, by those suggestions to make that pedestrian-friendly there. The properties on the north side on Elm would just, they would be a separate development. At this time, I believe it's proposed to be a standalone high-rise and not really utilize any of the parking on the south side. But of course, that could change, but they are planning on doing it by right with the high-rise zoning. Have any questions?
So the one that's on Husband, that's just a, currently it's a house that's right next to the parking lot that serves the high-rise that's under construction?
Actually, the parking structure, the parking garage is in this area, right here.
Okay.
The whole outer L is apartments.
Okay.
So this would just be a continuation, this would have apartments here.
So just north of that, there's going, there's going to be apartments built?
So this area here?
No, I'm talking about, I'm still just on the-
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah. This right here is part of, I believe, to here is being constructed right now as apartments around here, and then the parking garage is here. This area is proposed as Phase 2. We haven't-
So that's why there's nothing there, and I thought it was parking?
Right.
It's actually going to be buildings?
That's Phase 2 with apartments.
Okay.
They're building the parking garage right now to accommodate the whole development, but the apartments will come as Phase 2. So this would be wrapped up in Phase 2.
Okay. Well, that makes more sense, because I really didn't understand how you could use that one little lot for a high-rise.
Yeah.
By itself.
Tied together.
Yep.
Any more questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name's Marty. Hi. I'm an attorney here in town, but most relevantly, I'm a counsel on Salem Lutheran Church, which, if you could put up the map again, I could show you where our church is located. We're the quirky little church that's right across the street from the Eskimo Joe sign. And frankly, I'm here, we're fairly agnostic, if you will, about this construction, but we do have some concerns that we want to raise here, and we think this is an appropriate forum. Up until this point, Prime Place has been a very good neighbor, and we've actually worked together on some things to, as far as some of the work that's been done in their lot, some of their people park on our lot, along with our students park on this lot right here. And they've been a good neighbor. I suspect they'll continue to be a good neighbor. However, we do have a number of issues that we want to raise. Probably the most important thing, and the reason why we're agnostic about it, and I keep on saying that because that's a joke, but-
Good joke. I liked it.
The houses that are there currently, anything that would replace those houses, I think, would better the neighborhood. They're pretty rough houses. I suspect they're probably some of the roughest houses in Stillwater, and an apartment complex will do it justice. But our concerns are really roughly about parking during construction and after construction, the condition of Elm and Duncan currently, and after construction, and also the sidewalks. The construction has been rough on the neighborhood as far as streets, as far as sidewalks. And we urge the commission to take into consideration in any plans refurbishing the streets and sidewalks. Right now, Duncan's impassable, you know, it's cut off right now. And it needed to be cut off for their construction. So I don't, we don't have a quarrel with that, but just how, what it's replaced with is of concern to us. And also, even though these houses are pretty unsightly and probably unsafe, replacing it with a sterile apartment complex is our concern too. That factored into the, into the plan, there'd be a landscaping plan to improve the area as well as provide housing for students. So again, our main concerns are parking, the condition of Elm and Duck, and the condition of the sidewalks up and down Elm, because a lot of our congregation members use those sidewalks. And of course, some of them are unsteady, and any sort of rough sidewalk is going to pose a problem to us. You have any questions?
I have some questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
The sidewalks, I'm assuming this development, as it goes in, will be replacing the sidewalks in front of, adjacent to their development? Are you talking about sidewalks that are, is not adjacent to their development?
Adjacent to their development, and even closer to the corner of Dunk, Duncan and Elm. Those sidewalks have, well, in fact, there isn't a sidewalk on that, together, there's a sidewalk on the south side of Elm. Is there a sidewalk on the south side of Elm as well as the north side? I've only stared at it for 20 years.
I am assuming that we can get the engineer up, but I'm assuming the south side of Elm in front of your development, you're going to be building a brand-new sidewalk, which you've done on your other developments. Is that a correct statement?
Yes. As part of city code, we're required to replace, bring it up to code, six-foot sidewalks along our property.
So if you, so that'd be Elm, Husband, and Duncan, where you're building to?
Duncan doesn't have space for a sidewalk. It's only, it's actually only 20-foot wide right of way for alley. But we are also improving Duncan as part of this project.
That just wasn't, at least I didn't see that in the public record of the plan, so.
And there will be certain standards that if the zoning goes through, there's, they'll have to abide by parking onsite or off-street parking, or whatever it is. They'll still have to meet all those criteria that go along with that high-rise zoning.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Well, one more concern too. Duncan's closed right now. If Elm was closed, that would, that would, during the construction, that would limit egress to our parking lot. And so we're very concerned about that and how that's going to factor into the plan. So again, we're not opposed to the project, and in some cases, we're very much in favor.
Will the engineer come up and address that particular item in terms of-
We'd just like to see it in the plan. Okay? Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad she's saying that on the record, but we'd really like to see it in the plan as well, so.
Well, we're approving or not approving a zoning, not a plan.
Yeah, it's a straight zone.
So it won't be in the plan or not in the plan. It's up to the traffic engineer and the engineer to work on what streets will be closed and not closed. So the traffic engineer decides if that's a problem or not.
Yeah, they're not going to, they're not allowed to close that public road on their own. I mean, they can't just go out and, today we're going to close that road. They have to deal with-
Well, Duncan was closed without our notice, and that is rights to the east of our property.
And I might, this may be a Paula question or Kelly question. I'm not too sure that that wasn't in there, because that was a different, that was an agreement, because that was the only one accessing that Duncan.
Well, then you're changing my mind, because if these particular issues aren't addressed by the plan, and the plan isn't before the commission now, then we do oppose the zoning, because we want to see that factored in somehow, so.
The landscape is an integral part of the zoning. The sidewalks are an integral part of the zoning.
Parking.
The parking is an integral part of the zoning, but in terms of what streets can be closed during construction- be closed during construction is not something that this commission has any authority over. That's with the traffic engineer.
You have, you have authority over zoning, correct?
We have authority over zoning.
Until, until we resolve these issues, we oppose the zoning.
Okay.
Okay?
You can't speak now, Marty. You got to wait till we ask for those that are against it.
Any more agnostic voters that would, anyone else that would like to speak in favor? We're still in the in-favor portion? Yeah, we are. You started out in favor, and then, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Or quasi-agnostic?
Tom Hennessy, 124 East Redbud Drive. My family and I are members of Salem Lutheran Church for a long period of time, and clearly not agnostic. Just a point of inquiry, if this, with respect to the proposal north of Elm, if this action is approved, will the builder be required to meet any landscaping requirements, and if so, are these defined someplace in the city code where we can learn about them?
Yes, they'll have to meet requirements, and it is defined in the city code.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't remember, Tom, I had where the city code is defined, but yes, it's in the city code.
Who would, who would be able to help us identify the-
Tom Coots, right there, yeah.
More work for Tom.
Yeah, he's a good worker.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Ask Mr. Coots to come up for his alternatives.
Did you have any questions for me before I get to the alternatives?
Can I ask the engineer a question, or is that out of order at the present time?
No.
I was at the location earlier this afternoon.
Yes.
And there are barricades along Elm Street that are open. It says, "Local Traffic Only."
Part of the road is closed, right? Like the on-street parking portion?
The on-street parking portion is closed.
How we call it.
And then it's posted, "Local Traffic Only." And I did not go through that area, but I looked down that area, and it looked like if I wanted to drive down there, I could.
You can.
So are there plans to close Elm Street anytime-
No. The city, I believe the question was asked to close Elm, and the city did not allow that for fire, emergency vehicles.
So it, so it has been denied, so if the contractor happens to close it, then they'll be in deep trouble.
Yes. They do have to have that plan approved by the traffic department in the city of Stillwater. If it's not approved through there, then it's not allowed.
So if some neighbor sees it's closed, they need to-
They can check with the city, yes. Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. No, thank you. Yeah, nothing, nothing more. Any questions or discussion?
Question for Dennis. We can't speak to the requirements of what all is going on during this construction unless it's a PUD, can we? Well, I mean, the access and all of those types of issues, if we're doing a, we can't say, "Okay, we approve the zoning," as long as, that's not even something we're capable of doing.
Tom can get up again. Thank you, Tom, for being patient with me.
I would say that as of right now, we don't have any site plans or anything. I'm glad to answer these, some of these specific questions about what they may or may not be doing on the property, and I'll just say that since it's just a straight zoning, the land use code does speak to a lot of, a lot of those issues, and if and when we get a application for a building permit, anyone who'd like to can fill out an open records request and see what has been proposed, at least then at least know what's coming.
Tom, since it was brought up by a couple of people, what can you briefly discuss or address the landscaping requirements for the zoning district?
Yeah, landscaping, one, it's tied to the parking requirements, and if you have parking onsite, then you've got to have landscaping. The developer will probably have landscaping regardless. There's a question that was asked about whether or not they could have parking in the parking garage at the development across the street, and so we would probably kind of tie these developments together through mechanisms we have, so that they can't sell them separately, because the parking is intertwined with what would be across the street if they go that route, which they aren't necessarily going to go that route, as the engineer indicated today. And so then, either way, landscaping will be required in some form, since they're probably going to go with something more like a high percentage of block coverage, the only place that they could put most of it would be kind of toward the street, so you'd have lots of trees and bushes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Oops, yeah, we're on the alternatives. We can accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. We can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based on impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and to not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Questions, discussion?
I have a question for Paula or somebody, maybe that's here. If this is approved, and we get in the middle of it, and the church is having issues and big problems, what are their options to deal with those issues? Police? Tom, maybe you can-
I can probably answer that. Pretty much, right, and right now, it's been, you know, kind of a struggle dealing with the construction at that area. Our construction inspector for commercial projects is Brian Edmundston, and he kind of, and the stuff especially that's in the right-of-way, he's the guy, and so I'm always calling and speak to him, and he's been at this property many, many times since the construction, and had to correct many issues, you know, up to this point, so hopefully it's getting better, and hopefully in the future phases, it'll be, start out good and remain good.
Who besides Brian, assuming he was tied up on another project, would they have a way to get access to someone in the city that would have the authority to?
Brian's superior is Mike Beatty, the engineering manager, Mike Beatty.
I'll make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
First, we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second. We have a first and a second. Please place your votes. That does pass this evening, six yes and one abstain. Next item on the agenda, JB Fox LLC, map amendment PZ .14 .1829, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 1723 West Lakeview Road from RTM Residential Two Family and Multifamily to RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District. Mr. Coots?
Okay. This one's less odd compared to the others, so might have a fighting chance this time. All right, this is a request. The property is zoned RTM Residential Two Family and Multifamily right now. The property was previously zoned RM before we changed our code to split the RM residential, or, yeah, residential multifamily district into four different multifamily districts, and when that was done, it was attempted to take the, those and assign the zoning changes based on the use of the property at the time. So if a property had a certain amount of density, it would fall into this zone, if it had a certain amount of density, fall into that zone, and if it didn't have anything on it, it would fall into the RTM district, because that was the least dense multifamily district. And this property, that's how it became, went from RM to RTM, and that becomes, that's a part of why we're here. This property is surrounded on the north by the CS Commercial Shopping in the RTM District, east, RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family, south by the University District, some property that's owned by OSU, and the west, the Office District. The uses are, north is a commercial and a church, and the east is, right now, residential, south is university, and west is undeveloped currently. Staff findings, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan recommended high-density housing in the area, kind of a node of housing and commercial kind of centering on, on this area. This RMI District allows for 30 units per acre and a maximum height of 50 feet, and as I said, it was previously zoned RM, and that's how it got to RTM. There wasn't much, it was just it wasn't developed, so it went to RTM. So the applicant is here to request RMI, because I, they're going to testify that it meets better with their plans they had for the property. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Tom. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Anyone that would like to speak in favor, please step forward and state your name.
I'm Jimmy Hill, 2700 Southwestern, engineer for the applicant. As Thomas pointed out, this property was zoned RM in the past when the city split the RM into the three categories, the RTM, RMI, and RMU. This property was placed in what I'll say the lowest category or the most restrictive of the three. Was rezoned to RTM, which allows 20 units per acre at 35 feet of height. The owners are the developers of the vintage over on Jardoe, which you may be familiar with. They, they have a good bit of experience in development of multifamily residential, and they're finding that their best market seems to be the one-bedroom unit. Even though they don't have a detailed comprehensive plan or site plan developed, their desire is to move onto this property next and move toward perhaps three-story, one-bedroom-type units. So in order to do that, first off, the density, if it were to be rezoned to RMI, would allow 30 units per acre, and obviously, if you're building one-bedroom units rather than two- or three-bedroom units, the density, you get more of them on a single footprint. So the density is needed, and particularly the height is needed. The two-story building that they are planning in Phase Two, vintage at this time, would be greater than 35 feet, just for two stories. It has nine-foot ceilings, and will be a little bit greater than 35 feet for this two-story. So obviously, they wouldn't be able to do the three-story, one-bedroom units with the RTM limitation of 35 feet. For that reason, they are asking that we go to the mid-level zone of the RM breakdown, which is the RMI, that would allow 30 units per acre and would allow up to 50 feet of height. This will better fit what they desire, what they feel their market is, and will also, if we concentrate the units into smaller footprint, obviously will allow more green space within the acres that they have in which to work. So we point out also that even some of the existing buildings, even though it is a different zoning across Lakeview, already exceed 35 feet, already exceed the height that the existing RTM would restrict. So for those reasons, they would appreciate having the latitude to work with the parameters in the RTM. Would there be any question?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Mr. Coots, your alternatives?
Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. We can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based on impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and to not recommend the city council approve the map amendment. We can find that additional information and discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Any questions or discussion?
I move to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please place your votes. That does pass this evening, six yes, one abstain. We have our approval of a regular meeting summary of April 15, 2014. Does anyone have a chance to review those? Thank you.
May I move to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second.
I have a tie for second.
Yeah, tie.
We'll give it to Mike.
Please place your votes. This do pass this evening, five yes to abstain. Our next planning commission meeting is set for May 20, 2014. With that, would entertain motion of adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
First and a second, please vote. Once Cindy catches up.
Who seconded it, I'm sorry?
Joe.
Ah, there goes Cindy. She can do it.
With that, we are adjourned.